Six o'clock, so we will call the meeting to order. All members are present except for Ron. I know he may be here and he may not be here. So we'll move on. So first item of business is confession items.
Okay. We'll start with our elementary principals. So Mr. Bakersen, oh, she's shutting the door. Leave it to me. Sorry. If you want to give us an update as to what's happening at the elementary school, that would be wonderful. Good evening. Got a few updates and happy that are taking place last month, September, and this month. First, just recognizing our custodial staff. It was School Custodian Day, October 2nd. So just thanking our staff for making our learning spaces ready each day. There was also National Fire Prevention Week last week. So we had some special visitors from the Painesville Fire Department. They came over and did presentations to our preschool and kindergarten classrooms. Tonight, we kick off fall conferences. Our building is hopping with families. It's great. We've got the book fair going on. Always are busy. It's awesome to see families coming in. And during conference time, we share progress and goals and also share out the personal learning plans for each student, which reviews their FastBridge data. We'll talk more about that later on tonight. Also, tonight is our Club Choice Fundraiser Product Pickup. So very busy as well with that. But I just want to say a sincere thank you to our families for supporting our fundraiser. It was another great success. Also, thank you to many high school students that came over and helped unload five pallets of boxes. We got those organized and lined up and as families came in, wanting to get a product for families to make it smoother. And so I'm very thankful for that. And then just kind of two other items. We have our third annual family pumpkin decorating contest at the elementary school. This is a great family activity where it promotes the family coming together and decorating a pumpkin and then they put it on display and we have some fun with that. We line up the hallways with decorated pumpkins the week, last week of October. And then lastly, we are looking forward to our in-service time tomorrow where we are partnering with resource training. They're going to be providing some math training around our new standards that are coming out from the Department of Education. And then also we have Mr. Mathiason leading some training in adverse childhood experiences, which is being trauma informed and looking forward to that.
I'm on a phone call, please.
I also noted some important upcoming dates for families and for the public to know in the next month and a half or so. And that really, after tonight, we've got a lot going on. I think our families and students will be ready for a nice fall break and hit that reset button and come back next Monday. Any questions for Mrs. Bakersen? Cassie, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll invite Mr. Asmussen up and find out what's happening at the secondary. And then are you, yep, get your own.
Perfect.
All right.
Well, good evening, everybody. I just wanted to start off by saying a big thanks to all of the advisors, parents, and volunteers who helped make our Homecoming Week successful. It's a, you know, we did it really early this year and so it was a big lift to get that up and moving. And so just did a lot of reflecting on that weekend. I was just really thankful for everybody who helped out. It was really fun to see everybody there. I remember looking across at the homecoming football game and just seeing a sea of families and children. It was just such an awesome community event there. So one of the things, and I put some pictures up here, one of the things that we tried this year or something new that we started is we, I reached out to our student leader groups, our SAD groups, our student council groups, and I asked them, how, what would you feel about doing a homecoming cleanup? Where on the last day of homecoming, we get on a bus and we go around to the towns and in the houses in the town and we pick up toilet paper. So that's what we did for about an hour and a half. One day, we went around and cleaned up the town of Painesville. It's kind of a, as a thank you to our community for, you know, supporting us and supporting our homecoming. And so we went out and did that. It was great. We had a fun, Mr. Mathiason and I were out there with them picking up toilet paper all over town. So.
Except in the country, too.
And we didn't make it much out of city limit, too. Yeah, we're pretty tired by that time. So we picked up a lot of toilet paper. So I, Cassie mentioned School Custodial Day. I was in a meeting with Ken and I don't mean to put him on the spot, but he said, our job is to do all the things so everybody else can do their things, right? And I didn't say it as eloquently as Ken did, but we're just thankful that they do all the things behind the scenes so that all the learning can take place here and everybody else can do their thing. So really thankful for them. One of the things I'm excited about starting is we just started this thing called UU Uplift Positive Messaging System. And so if you take a walk around our building and our student center and our cafeteria, you'll notice displays that stream positive messages. And how this works is students, they submit positive messages. There's a place on their student portal that they can go and they write in a positive message. Hey, so-and-so, thanks for being a great friend. You know, and then Mike and I get to look at those messages and we either approve or deny them. And so if we approve them, they go up on this kindness board for everybody to see. And it's just been a really cool way of students kind of supporting each other and writing positive messages. Social media tends to be a very negative thing and people get really beat up on social media. And so it's nice to have a pseudo-social media that's positive for students where they can, they can lift each other up and say, hey, I saw you at the game lab, great job. And so that's, there's a video in there that you can watch if you want to, but it's a really cool program that I'm excited about having. It was started by Lifetouch. Lifetouch reached out to UU Uplift and they do, they wrote a grant for all Minnesota schools. So it's free for every Minnesota school to do this. And so the guy who runs UU Uplift reached out to me and said, if you want to get on board, it's free. And so we did it and you feel free to walk around, take a look at them, but it's just a really cool thing that we're, we're starting over here. So I'm looking ahead in a very short timeframe, I guess, when I wrote this a week ago, I didn't, all conferences are here. And so tonight and tomorrow, we have fall conferences. We have no school, October 15th, 16th, and 17th. And then October 31st is the end of the first quarter already. And boy, does that happen fast, you know? So that's, so that's what I have for the secondary. So thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Asmussen? All right. Thanks, Cassie. Appreciate it. All right. Moving on to community education. Let's find out what's happening out and about in the other spaces of our learnings.
All right. Mine's pretty short, but we'll go over a few things on, in early childhood, we started those ECFP classes. We have eight kids in our two and three-year-olds, six in our zero-to-two. And then our additional class that starts on Monday, we have 11 families. So that's been a nice addition. We have a Boo Bat coming up. That's October 30th. The middle school, the middle school student government is going to be helping us with just running the games and doing the activities. So we're excited to welcome them to our team for that night. And then the Early Childhood Playground, we have played on it. So the kids are excited, yes. It's not quite finished, but we put, you know, a group out there, a small group out at a time to keep them in their, in their area. But soon the cement and fence will be done, but it's, it is, we were out there, a bunch of us, I don't know what day it was, but we went out there with our rakes and Ken came with a, with a skid steer and we did woodchips and got it all done. So, so we're excited for it to be finished. I'm sure Ken is, too. So. We have our winter catalog coming up. That's what we're working on now. Many of our fall things are done and we're gearing up for winter. So it'll come out the week of December 1st. And then finally, just a bit of our childcare task force that's been working for the last few months. We held a childcare provider appreciation event on September 22nd and it was at the Corona Brewing. And there were 12 childcare providers that were there. We had really good food and they split up into groups, had some great discussion around, you know, that issues, roadblocks, even, you know, concerns around childcare and, you know, how we could grow it. And then also just some, a few even, they talked about some ideas. So all of that discussion was, all the information was gathered and along with that survey that we had out, that just ended in October, all of that data is going to go with us to the Town Hall meeting. And that is on the 3rd of November. You can still sign up. So that link will get you to your QR code if you're interested in being part of the discussion. It's open to everyone. And we'll be taking the survey data, information that we have from the first finance people and then the daycare provider event and brainstorming ideas, brainstorming solutions and putting that all on a giant document at some point so that this task force can come back together and write some goals. So that's what's going on with that. This event includes dinner, so if that's an incentive.
And the other piece that I just want to add, and then I just add one other caveat to that is even though you may not have kids in daycare anymore, you could very well have solutions that sometimes really people that are very close to the issue can't see. So please don't, don't feel like you can't be there because my kids aren't in daycare anymore or, I don't know, my kids are long gone. Well, we need the brainstorm and we need, we need all of the conversation starters at the table. So come on out and have dinner.
Right. If we, we need those daycare providers. Our, our businesses need them to keep people, you know, in their jobs. We need them here to maybe build homes. So it impacts our economy. And, and so that's why it's everyone's issue and we all need to get together and talk about it. All right? Any questions?
Questions for us?
Okay. All right.
Thank you. And we will wrap up our administrative updates with buildings and grounds. Mr. Ossendorf, what's happening?
Oh, almost sick of talking about the playground. So it is going really well. Got all the poles in before so we can get the concrete rolling, get the horns up. We've been getting it ready, prepping it for this concrete. It started raining today and I'm not going to lie, I was like, oh, thank God for the rain. Need a little break for it. So yeah, it's going really well over there. I do want to get it done, completed. So science room, we polished the floor once. It looks okay, but when they took the asbestos off, they left some grind marks and they ground that off. And I'm trying to get them polished out a little better so it looks better yet. So I've got Brad working on that going over it again so we can come up with there. Open a pole ceiling tile here in the next couple of weeks, so on and so forth. Get it ready for that. Paint them, pull some tile off the floors. Just minor things before the cabinets do come, which is, we're way ahead of schedule for that because the cabinet's not scheduled for a couple of weeks, probably two months. So. Few things with air handlers, starting firing them up to full power and some bearings and so on, needing to replace. So we'll stay on top of them. We had a huge drain pipe plugged, but I had to shut a bathroom down for a few days. We got that, the big road router, we got through it. So and then Thursday, Friday, we're going to finish up LEDing other than cabbies, you know, but the main, both schools, the main school should be all LED lights. So any questions?
All right.
We will move on to the tax increment financing and tax abatement. For the boards of information, no boarding, let's test it.
So the first presentation that we're going to have, Jody, can you hear me okay?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can. Do you have control of the screen? I don't see what the, there we go. So Jody is with Ellers Financial and Ellers is the financial, really the financial advisor for the school district who has, we've consistently worked with when we've worked through our building bonds, our operating referendum, our, our capital project levy. So you all might recognize Jody. And so Jody, thank you for being here to just kind of walk through what tax increment financing is, kind of the tax abatement. And then after your presentation, we'll just have you hang out to answer any questions that may come up as well. And then we'll move in and, and we'll hear a little bit more information about the requests to, for consideration for the board. So I'm going to just turn it over to you and, and we'll let you get rolling.
Great. Thanks, Janelle, and good evening, everyone. We are going to start out, we put some information in the presentation just to provide some background information and some of it will be repetitious to those of you who have been on the board for a while, but I think it's helpful just to understand some of the concepts behind our property tax system, our funding system. All of that will be relevant to the conversation on abatement and TIF. So first of all, we pay, we have money in property taxes and we probably think that that is providing the majority of support for our schools. But in fact, the majority of funding for operating costs for school districts does come from the state. And in particular, when we talk about that general education formula allowance, that is entirely paid for and comes from the state. So with respect to property taxes, you can see that is in the blue slice, which is what we have labeled as local revenue. That includes a few other sources also besides property taxes, but property taxes are included in that portion of this pie chart. The maximum authorized property tax levy is determined by state funding formulas and the district can levy less, but not more than the amount authorized by the state unless approved by the voters. So when you guys see that 39-page report from MD, from Minnesota Department of Education, it's in like size four font, that has all of the different funding formulas that are approved by the state and that provides the maximum that is available to the school district through property taxes and also does include your operating referendum and your capital project levy that Janelle referenced a couple of minutes ago, that those are approved by the voters and are in addition to those funding formulas. So both our school finance and property tax systems in Minnesota are complex. We've been told they're some of the most complex in the nation, but it is important to note that the revenue is primarily based on enrollment, is not driven by the tax base. So often we'll see a new hospital built or new, new manufacturing facility and people will say, oh, gosh, now you're going to have so much more money from property taxes. But in fact, that is not the case. And when your property values increase, that doesn't mean that the school district is getting more money either. So all of those formulas, for the most part, are determined by enrollment. There's only one exception to that and that is your capital project or technology levy. That is the only funding formula in all of your school funding formulas that is based on a tax rate and that tax rate is approved by your voters and the question that you present to them. So the revenue does fluctuate based upon your tax base. So as your tax base increases, you are eligible for more revenue. In years when it goes down, then you are eligible for less revenue. But everything else is determined by your enrollment. Importantly also, and different than other taxing jurisdictions, you have two different tax bases and two different tax rates. So we often also get asked, can you tell me what the tax rate for the school district is? And we'll say, well, there's two, so we need to, you need to know both of them. And referendum market value, or if you hear people use the acronym RMB, that is all of the taxable property in your school district excluding seasonal rec and egg lands. And that exclusion was put into place when Governor Ventura was in office because he had a seasonal rec property in a district that was voting on an operating referendum and he didn't think he should have to pay on the referendum if he didn't get to cast his vote. So that has been in place for a number of years now. And there are only a few categories of funding that are spread on that tax, that referendum market value tax base, but it does include your voter-approved operating referendum. All of your other tax levies are spread on the tax base that's called NTC or net tax capacity. And that is calculated through, through formulas that, that take the market value of the property and then there's different class rates assigned and determined by the legislature. So for net tax capacity-based levies, that tax rate is a little higher for commercial industrial as it is as compared to residential homes. So any of those levies that are net tax capacity-based, you, those people are paying at different rates depending upon the type of property owned. This is tax-based composition specific to Painesville. So each of these charts look very different depending upon the school district that we're looking at. So if you look at the different types of properties on the left-hand side, residential homestead, other residential, commercial, non-qualifying egg, which is the house garage and one acre, qualifying egg, and we use that acronym because it qualifies for the egg to school credit, which is a very important property tax relief program that's been put in place for owners of agricultural properties, and then seasonal rec. So you can see the shares just of the overall market value of the, of those types of properties. And then you'll see columns for both of the tax bases that we just talked about. So referendum market value is one of the, one of the primary levies in that category is your voter-approved operating referendum. For that particular levy, your residential homeowners pay 64% of that levy. Your qualifying egg, you can see, is zero. They are exempt and for the most part, all of the seasonal rec property is exempt. There's a few categories of resorts that aren't exempt from that referendum market value levy. So when you're asking a question for, to your voters for operating referendum, you can see who, which categories of property types pay, what, what amount they each pay. So contrast that then to the, the final column, which is net tax capacity. So anytime you present a school building bond question, your capital project levy, all of the other levies that are determined by the state are assessed in this way. So residential homes, instead of paying 64% of those levies, pay about 35%. And then you'll see you pick up your, your qualifying egg and the seasonal rec all contribute toward those levies. One caveat with respect to qualifying egg is that on all of your debt service levies, they do receive that 70% egg to school credit on their debt service levy. So again, that's been a really important component of property tax relief for those property taxpayers because they felt like they were paying too big a burden toward those and the legislature and governor agreed and put that program in place in 2018. So why, why would the school district consider or any other entity consider an abatement and/or tax increment financing district? So generally, these are economic development strategies to encourage your community reinvestment and enhance your community objectives. So again, creating or retaining jobs, redeveloping areas, constructing affordable housing is a common, a common strategy that we see throughout the state. And the abatement approval, abatements can be established by the different jurisdictions. Each entity does have to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution and the items that need to be included in that resolution are listed there. So the term of the abatement, the statement of the public benefit that it's expected to result, findings, and then a schedule of repayment of the taxes. So school districts can elect to participate in their share of the taxes toward the abatement. The, the duration or time limit or term varies depending upon how many of the entities are participating in the abatement. And then this is abatement guidance specific to school districts from the Minnesota Department of Education. So the board can approve the resolution only after holding the public hearing on the proposed abatement. And again, the details of what must be included in that resolution, similar to what was on the previous slide, the nature and extent of public benefits that the district expects to result. And then the language included in the guidance from MDE states that districts granting economic development abatement must levy an amount equal to the estimated sum of the abatements granted. With respect to the impact of abatement on a school district, the amount of the abatement is added back then to the total levy and that's determined based upon the amount that is paid. The result to the district, though, is revenue neutral. So you remit the payment of the abatement and then you levy to offset that payment that you're remitting. So then the abatement does result in an increase in school taxes for all existing property owners. It's a separate levy included in your, that, that levy report that I mentioned from Minnesota Department of Education. You provide the information to them and they add that on as a separate line item within your levy report. So now we're going to talk a little bit about tax increment financing, another economic development tool. With respect to tax increment financing, the school district's role is largely limited to making advisory comments. So you don't have a hearing, you don't have a resolution, there's no specific action generally taken by the school district. They do require approval, though, if it's a workforce housing project financed by economic development districts. So that is one exception. And generally, you are receiving communication from the city regarding the tax increment financing process and they do communicate with you on it. But again, you generally don't have any role with respect to action taken on tax increment financing districts. So with respect to a tax increment financing district, the city creates that district, results in new development. And if there's an increase in tax base with no change in enrollment, for the referendum market value-based levies, there's an immediate impact for growth in RMB because the TIF property takes out a greater share of the RMB levy. So those TIF, there's no RMB levies captured as part of a tax increment financing district. So then again, the result to the school district is revenue neutral. So because you are, all of your funding formulas are based, are based on enrollment and most of your funding formulas have a equalizing or state aid component to them, you would either receive less from state aid and more from property taxes as that referendum market value grows, or you would receive the same amount of state aid with a lower tax rate for all of your existing taxpayers. With respect to the net tax capacity-based levies, then, the, if the city's creating a TIF district that results in the new development and an increase in tax rate, again, with no change in enrollment, for your capital project levy, the growth in the net tax capacity causes an increase in revenue, but you don't collect that. It's deferred really until the TIF district is decertified because they're capturing that portion of your net tax capacity until the time that the TIF district is, has expired. For other net tax capacity-based levies, again, the effect is deferred until it's certified and then the result is revenue neutral. So you're either going to receive less from state aid and more from property taxes or again, the same state aid with a lower rate for all of your existing taxpayers. And this kind of shows you a graphic of how that tax capacity is captured during the time that the TIF district is in place and the base tax capacity remains with the taxing jurisdiction. And then the tax capacity is captured during the time that that TIF district is outstanding. And then you can see, once the TIF is decertified or ends or expires, the full tax capacity is then available to all taxing jurisdictions. So the TIF district, as one of its components that from the start, has to meet a but-for test. So without the TIF district in place, we assume that that growth would not occur. So in the end, the benefit then accrues to all of the different taxing jurisdictions from that TIF district over time. So with respect to tax increment financing, no loss of revenue. We often hear people that are concerned when a TIF district is formed, that the school district is losing out on money, but you are not losing out on money. Again, your tax, your, your formulas are dependent upon your enrollment. You're still going to collect your money that you would have otherwise based upon your student enrollment. And then your tax-based growth as a result of the TIF will reduce school tax rates for all existing property owners on your, with respect to the referendum market value levies, that is immediate. And with the net tax capacity levies, again, that's deferred until the end of that TIF district. So I probably spoke fast like I usually do and went through a lot of information. And Janelle, I don't know if you want questions now or if you want to wait until we've seen some additional information.
Sure. No, I think maybe just to kind of recap why we're having the conversation because as a school district, we have, we have. Because as a school district, we have, we have businesses that are, have applied for tax increment financing, and we have businesses that have applied for tax abatement. So as we're seeing and having a conversation about, about a consideration for the board, I wanted to make sure that you all understood what a taxing, what a TIF is and what abatement is. Okay, so maybe before we move into just kind of the request and the open conversation around Lewis Industries' request, let's just maybe pause for any questions about abatement or TIP in general before we look at the specifics.
Give us a quick definition of the two. A TIF versus, versus the abatement.
Also, yep, go ahead.
For instance, Bruce.
So last night I looked at some of the taxes where we had a TIP.
Yes.
There was a, they actually paid the taxes.
They do, that's true.
Funded to them through a process of the TIP. With the tax abatement, there are no taxes. Am I reading that right?
So with respect to the TIP, you're correct.
There's no tax statement on the properties where tax abatement exists. On the county side.
Yeah, so with respect to the TIP, yes, people, everybody's paid the taxes. You wouldn't really notice any difference, right? You're just paying the taxes as assessed by the different taxing jurisdictions. But it's getting captured and used toward the development of that particular TIF district, you know, for whatever types of costs are assigned. With the abatement, you are actually, so the amount of school taxes that are collected on those parcels are being forwarded then to help fund that economic development activity. And then you actually include a separate, for school districts, you include a separate additional levy within your property tax, all of your property tax levies that's spread against all of the taxpayers in your district. So you forego that abatement, you're giving up the abatement money on parcels, but then you're spreading that, you're adding an additional levy that's spread against all of the taxpayers in your district.
What does the additional levy potentially cost the taxpayer?
So we kind of did a little rule of thumb as we were looking through that because that was a question that Janelle had too. So for a five thousand dollar tax abatement, it's about a dollar a year on a three hundred thousand dollar home.
Other general questions about TIP or abatement? Can I move on? And I, so I'm going to move on to the abatement request. So I'll invite Logan to come on up and you can sit next to me here and we'll join, have your, your brother join us. Lance is online. So Jody, if you want to close your presentation and then I think Logan will be, Lance will be, Lance will be able to see a little bit better. But really, I guess, what I'm just going to walk through and then Lance and Logan are going to stand for questions from the board. So what has been kind of uploaded within the document, or within the board agenda here, is the request that went to the city. So as Jody mentioned, an abatement approval needs to be, be done at the city, the county, and the school district. And I'll let you guys, I believe that that's been done at the county and the city already.
Yeah, can, can everybody hear me okay?
Yep, we sure can. Yep.
Okay, maybe I'll just, just spend a couple of minutes here answering or giving you the high level. So this is the second time.
Now you're breaking up.
Okay.
Lance, do you maybe want to turn, Lance, do you want to? Yeah, maybe if you turn your camera off, you might stream better. Yeah, try that.
Okay. Okay, so we did our first tax abatement in our, in our twenty twenty-one expansion. The reason we have to ask, ask for tax abatement and not go with our traditional TIF district is if you look at our lot in the industrial park, we actually have eleven parcels separated. And, and two of the parcels are separated by an old railroad track that was never properly abated in the nineteen forties. So when we combined all these properties, built over the properties, we couldn't do a TIF district based on some, some rules with the state of Minnesota. So we had to go with tax abatement. The reason we cannot ask for a TIF district today is you cannot do TIF and abatement at the same time. So to continue our expansions, to continue our business success, we have to do an abatement district on top of an abatement. Michael Williams at the, at Stearns County has, has been very helpful to us. We, we worked with the city, with the county. The city of Painesville has taken the lead. We've done all of our public hearings with the, with the city, they've passed the abatement. Then they, they punted the ball to the county. The, the county has done their hearings, they've passed their abatement. And now we're here at, at the school kind of asking for the same thing. If you, if you look at the headlines, we're, we're in the midst of, of an eight million dollar expansion. Some of that includes adding fifteen additional jobs, all of them at wages above twenty dollars an hour. I, I think that's probably the high level I'll, I'll add here. Jody did a great job explaining everything else. Logan, I don't know if you want to add anything in the room, otherwise I think we're, we're kind of here for questions.
And then too, I'm also going to, and you may not be able to see, well, and I can show it on, I can share it to you if you'd like. Actually, I am going to share it because, and I'll make it bigger. So when, when Lance referenced that the city has kind of taken the lead, so what you're going to see here that I'm sharing with you is a document that outlines the estimated financing, because that's one of the components that needs to be presented, is what is the fiscal impact. And so, okay, that's going to be super small, so let me, let me go my hundred and, let's put two hundred percent here. And then I'll just scroll over a little bit. So as you take a look at this, you're going to see how this works for each of the entities. So you're going to see the city tax abatement, county tax abatement, and school tax abatement. Okay, so this is one of the areas where, where Lance was saying the city has taken the lead. So this was prepared by, and I believe it's Northland Securities, is the financial advisor for the school district, or for the, sorry, for the county and the city. Okay, so this kind of gives you a rough outline and you'll see on, so in the first taxes payable year twenty twenty-seven, now I'm going to scroll all the way over to the right, you're going to see the school tax is approximately, the tax abatement would be two thousand one hundred twenty-four. I forget what PV tax abatement, the dollar amount nineteen, go ahead.
So yeah, the, the PV is just the present value.
Present value, thank you. Yep. So that's going to give you a kind of a roadmap of what those dollars are per year. So then just as a reminder, now I'm going to stop sharing just so we can, makes it a little bit easier for you on, online to see the board. So just as a reminder, what Jody kind of referenced is for, for a home that's valued at about three hundred thousand dollars, that would be one dollar for every five thousand dollars that's abated and levied back. Okay. So now, board members, I'll stand kind of with you and, and answer any questions that I can, or else let Logan and Lance answer questions from the Lewis Industries side.
So what, one of the things that we, I guess, will be in the, if we move forward with this, is what is the benefit? We have, we have to have a benefit statement. Not having seen the document, what is that benefit statement? For, for this, and I, I'm taking it, it must be maybe individual, so let's say what's the benefit statement for us?
Well, we're trying to add fifteen jobs with that. So the hope is, okay, T, but that there's more people that either stay in town or move to town. And hopefully they have kids in the school district or move into the school. I mean, if you want to come take a walk around the shop, you can see a bunch of PhDs and people have their kids working all over the shop. So it's just trying to retain talent or bring talent to Painesville best weekend. For the years that I was working with that guy in development, the jobs is the only indicator. So the amount of jobs that they're forecasting, and I, last night, just out of curiosity, I took fifteen jobs at twenty dollars an hour times five-day work week times ten years. I'm not exactly sure what the number was, it was around five million dollars. That was coming to the community in a ten-year period of time for a tax abatement, which was relatively nominal for us specifically. Even if you put all three of them together, that was still, it just appeared to me to be a little bit of a nominal amount for those kind of wages. But it's also not going away. The other thing is, can I just stress a personal opinion? Commonly, small towns look at everybody from out of town, being the ones you want to participate with, right? This company comes in with their big song and dance. We have tax increment financings that we had when I was more involved, that disappeared at the end of the tax increment financing. Right? Came to town, big fluffy story, it was all gone. So all this great idea didn't really pan out like that well. This is different. This is a, a rock, solid company in the town of Painesville, showing a history of great employment since there, the beginning of the whole thing. It's kind of a different thing. But I know that when I was dealing with a lot of economic development authorities and things like that, when all of this was first generated, all the conversation was about somebody from out of town. And, but how do you help somebody local? That's who you want to help, they're already here. It would seem to be our best shot of gaining those wages. Do the wages come to us directly? We don't know. It's our job to prove to them with what we're coming up with, with what we're doing with our students, that they should bring their kids here. But most of these, the dollars make a lot of sense. In the first economic development grant that I was directly involved in, the whole grant came to the city based upon jobs involved, all the, the new jobs that were created. And I'm just a little bit where, when it's a local company, that's, if I had to put them on a plateau, and again, this is a personal opinion, the ones coming from out of town with all the song and dance and everything else, I would rank here. A local company that's showing a history already? Man, those are companies you want to settle in with. If these guys, obviously, I don't really know what your expansion deal is specifically, just what I read here. But if they're looking at expansion and it's a local company, they've shown us the path already, they have lots of jobs in the community. It just seems to me that it would make a lot of sense. I'm guessing that same analysis probably was already done by the city and the county because they've seen the same thing. Somebody comes on the big song and dance out of the metro or coming from another state, you know? It's not always better there, but we don't have a history. Here you have a history of a good, rock-solid company that's going to perform like they say they perform. I, I don't mean to be an advertisement for Lewis Industries either. You're doing a great job. One of the other companies that has tax increment financing is a local company. They are here, they're solid, they have proven that. But without naming them, I can think of three of them that left at the end of tax increment financing. Once it hit the ten years, they were out of here. That was not beneficial to us, turned out to be, but it took building sales, it took five, ten years for companies like this to pick up after them. Because I think you guys might have picked up after one of those already. In their expenses over the years, but just a personal opinion.
So, so right now, Lance or, or Logan, what is, say, a percentage of the number of employees that you have that, that are within our tax district, as far as school district, that are already paying taxes? And, and I mean, it could, it could be an estimate, seventy percent, thirty, whatever that is, do you, do you have an idea?
Um, I don't have an idea for the, the actual Painesville School District. But when we, when we tracked, when we track addresses from our plant, ninety percent of our staff lies within twenty-five miles of our factory.
That is okay, very good, thank you.
Yeah, no, and that's, that's a great question and we, we do look at that. You know, what, what, what we find is if, if people are traveling too far, they're going to go find another job closer.
Yeah, yeah.
So recruiting locally within that twenty-five-mile district is huge for us.
All right, thanks Lance.
You did mention one thing about helping the school. We run that apprenticeship program.
Oh yes, right.
So I think, Lance, where we have three kids right now in the apprenticeship program currently on it?
You know, this is the time of year where we're settling in with new kids this year. I, I can't tell you today where we're at. I believe we might have three, we might have another one slated to start. But what I can tell you is the apprentice program we do has, has been a phenomenal feeder, future success. So several of the kids that have been through the apprentice program are actually working their way up in our company over time. Our, our plant manager was our first apprentice. We have an engineer that started in that and we've got a young, another young guy that's, that's working his way up. And getting those kids in our factory, you know, showing them what, what a manufacturing career can be. And then letting them grow is, is amazing. And when we, when we take school groups through, a lot of times the teachers, principals, whoever come through, actually are amazed by what some of their students are doing, you know, a couple of years after school. And that's, that's always fun to watch that interaction.
Good, thank you.
I, Janelle, one, one thing I would point out to the, to the board and Janelle, because we can't qualify for TIF, the, the request we had with the county, the, the city and the school board is really to mirror a nine-year, a traditional nine-year TIF with just a nine-year abatement. So the ask we have is, is no different than what a traditional TIF would be in, in terms of dollars or length or anything. You, you could ask for a lot more in abatement, but we just, we felt it was fair to imitate what a TIF would do because that's traditionally what, what businesses qualify for.
Sure. Thank you for the clarification.
As I say, in a lot of words, Bruce said I just feel the same sentiment. I mean, a good local company that's been around, I, have not had any concerns or major questions on this so far, so.
I don't have any real concerns either, it's just seems like a boon to our community to bring in fifty more jobs, whether it be students that are graduating or new people coming in. We're constantly talking in our board about growing our community. And that's one of the things we need, is more jobs along with more housing and other entities. I think it's an excellent job that you guys are doing.
And most of those fifteen jobs are either being filled, or if you, you look at our Facebook page or our Indeed website, or even our, our website, most of those jobs are currently listed and we're trying to fill. It's, it's not like we're adding these jobs two years down the road. We actually have a need for, for skills today.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? So just kind of as a process reminder, um, so this is kind of our, uh, the informational component. Uh, the resolution would be presented in on October twenty eighth. Um, and and within, as Jody mentioned, um, there's a a set criteria of of uh, information that needs to be in that resolution, um, that will speak to um, the why and the and the dollars and and all of those components. So that'll be presented at the October twenty eighth board meeting. Um, and at that point in time is when the board would decide to take action. And I've approved through a resolution, um, the abatement process. Any other questions for me? Jody, is there anything further that you feel like you'd like to add?
I don't think so. Thanks for the opportunity to present to you tonight and you have the materials. So if any questions come up after the fact, just follow them through Janelle and we'll get back in touch.
Alright, thank you, Jody. Uh, Lance, anything further that you'd like to add?
No, I think the only thing I'd add is, you know, any of you are welcome at any time to to come, take a tour of our plant, uh, see what we're doing. See where some of the products are going, see the staff, see the robotics, see the automation, you know, see the vision of what we're, what we're doing in the future. So you're you're welcome at any time.
You can even come right now and see how the construction's going.
After Ken will be right there. Anything else you want to add?
Uh, no, that's the main thing. If you guys want to see what we're doing, by all means, contact Lance or myself. Or even Kevin. Kevin's, Kevin's there three days a week. He can help too. Let us know. We'll take you for a tour.
Thank you.
Alright, okay. Um, and with that, if there's something else, I'll say thank you for joining us. Lance, thank you for hopping on. Jody, have a good night. Lance, and wherever you're off to, enjoy. And uh,
Alright, thank you. Have a great time.
Thanks. Bye bye. Alright, um, and with that, um, Joe.
Yep, with that, uh, we'll move on to the district data follow-up today.
Um, and this is, uh, so I will invite, um, Mrs. Akerson and Mr. Rasmussen to come on up. Cassie and Jesse, if you want to come on over and uh, take the, take the helm. Um, this is, uh, it has become one of my, uh, one of my favorite meetings, uh, because I think it does provide us an opportunity to publicly do what Bruce just said. Talk about the things that we are doing in our buildings and uh, and talk about the academic components, the things that are, are that are really driving what we do. So do you want me to, uh, how would you like me to? Okay, uh, so I will.
Just have it in front of me.
Okay, so.
The print is so small.
I appreciate that.
Let me. Why is that? Yeah, um, I'm, I'm gonna pivot for just a second. And I'm gonna find, I'm gonna find it in a different format, okay? Can you remind me what the document is called?
School data presentation.
As you present, do you mind if we ask questions on the go or do you want to wait till the end?
I don't want to speak for Cassie over here, but I'm okay if you ask questions on the go.
That's not it. That's that. It's a different title, shared. Alright, there we go. This will be easier. Um. Good night. Alright, thanks for the technical difficulties. There we go.
Well, we wanted to make sure we start where we, where we should start here. And so, uh, the next slide after this is our, uh, mission. So the mission of Painesville Area Schools is to prepare students with the academic, social and personal skills uh, to succeed in their career and community. And this mission statement really guides our work here. And so I want to make sure that was at the forefront of this presentation. If you go to the next slide, um, we've been having lots of conversations this year with staff and at staff meetings. Um, and especially around data using these four guiding questions. So these four guiding questions that we put here really guide what we do. And the first two kind of cover the first part of this presentation, the last two cover the end of the presentation. So our first guiding question is, what do we want our students to know and be able to do? And so that looks at things like knowing academic standards or social emotional skills. And so uh, the first question we always ask is what do we want our students to know? And number two is, how will, how will we know if our students know it? And so that's where the assessment piece comes in. That's where this, um, our suite of assessments, FastBridge, MCA's and all the data we collect is all based around this number two. How will we know if our students know it?
So looking at the next slide, when we talk assessments, we're really looking at evidence of learning. It might not be a computerized assessment. It might not be, um, multiple choice assessment. It could be a project, right? Um, but just to review the evidence of learning and where tonight's data is pulled from. Uh, we have screeners. This is our FastBridge. And so again, I will use the same analogy. It's like checking the oils on one day, one small sampling. Um, that is our FastBridge. And then from there, when that check oil light comes on, we do a diagnostic. And we look into, okay, what's, what's the problem? We can do problem analysis work, um, with our diagnostic. And so we have assessment tools that we use to get down to the root cause. And then more on the day to day, we have formative assessments. Um, oftentimes, you know, in our learning spaces, we might do uh, a quick thumbs up, thumbs down. It might be an exit ticket, a quiz or a small project sampling. And then we move over to the summative, which is going to inform, um, our understanding after the learning has taken place with bigger comprehensive assessment tools. Um, unit tests and MCA's would fall under the summative, um, piece here. And the next slide, um, this is the visual that you've seen before. And Jesse and I really had, uh, some good conversation about making sure that our presentation is staying consistent over, uh, the last couple of years. And as we continue to build, you know, the board knowledge in our um, school community knowledge to use that same verbiage and same visuals, um, so we can continue to go deeper. And so this visual just shows, we start with state requirements, state assessment, uh, like MCA's. And then we have come down to the district level. Those are our FastBridge assessments. Um, but now and more recently, um, our district assessment with FastBridge has trickled up to the state level. And so requirements from the RED Act, um, coming at the state level through FastBridge. Then we hone in on, um, what do assessments look like at our sites, secondary and elementary, at the classroom level? And then we get down to the most important, nitty gritty, the individual student level. And so how are we assessing students and and their knowledge? Uh, so hopefully that visual looks, um, familiar to you. Before we jump into data, um, we've had a lot of conversation again, um, in this first quarter about moving the needle. How do we move the needle with student achievement as a district? Not, um, by separate buildings, but together. And so uh, Jesse and I have had a lot of conversation about how do we take a step forward together so that we're building some commonality, um, throughout the district. And we've used the phrase move the needle. Go small to go big. So that way we are able to identify, you know, I think of valves, right? And if we start turning all the valves, we don't know which one did it, right? And so we need to make small tweaks so we can modify and adjust as needed. Um, but most importantly, when we talk data, yes, it's a number, but it's also our students. And it's, um, each other's children, um, that go home at night, who are families. And so it's important that we remember that the data represents students and every student has a story. Um, which we'll, we'll get big picture tonight, um, but really when we look at a data point, it represents a child. So with that, we will continue to jump in.
So one of the big kind of outlook ways that we look at data, this is a, um, what we call our one pager, but it's really a two pager. And we, uh, we publish this out on our website. So if you go to the website and you click on the little circle that says about, um, this is the thing that'll come up and and on here is just some, some key metrics for our school district. And so, um, on the left-hand side, we have our graduation rate, which you can see is at, um, ninety point three percent, ninety-three percent. The percentages are pretty small here. And then, um, you go down and I, and I, um, was joking a little bit that I have to explain this. This says concurrent college enrollment. So what this means is how many students currently enrolled in Painesville schools are taking college in the schools type classes? Okay, this is not how many students go on to college, but this is how many right now while they're in Painesville are taking college in the school-type classes. And the state average is thirty percent. Uh, we in Painesville schools are at sixty-one percent of our students that are enrolled are taking uh, or high school students, sorry, not of total enrollment of high school. Sixty-one percent of our high school students are enrolled in, uh, college level classes while being here in Painesville, which is a, a pretty impressive number. Um, if we look to the right there, we have our FastBridge scores and we'll kind of parse these down into individual grade levels. We provided you a lot of data to look at and kind of dig through. Um, but if we look at our district fluency, we're at sixty-seven percent. A district reading, we're at sixty-two percent proficient, uh, and at math, we're at sixty-eight percent. And then down below, we have a little section, um, that shows our trend lines for the MCA scores. And again, uh, we'll go into that in a little more detail and kind of parse out that data for you so you can see a a little more than that small graph down there. So, but we do publish this. It's out on our websites. Families can click on it. They just click on the little about link so they can see, um, the good things that are happening. Um, so up here, uh, moving on to our MCA data. Um, so we pulled the MCA data and so you can see this is the elementary slide. There's elementary math, elementary reading and elementary science. Um, on each of these graphs, you're gonna see three lines. The the light blue line, um, indicates the building. So in this case, that is the elementary schools line. Uh, the dark blue line indicates the state average, uh, and the green line indicates the district. So you can see those on all three. Uh, the blue line indicates the the building, dark blue state average, and then green line district. So if you go over to the next slide.
Wait, oh, and mine are science only guys.
Perfect. Thank you, Bruce. So they just started. Last year was the very first year of the brand new science assessment. And there's a disclaimer down here that the MDE put out. It says the science MCA four is a new assessment in twenty twenty-five, reflecting a reset in the way we teach and measure science learning. Results cannot be compared with previously years. So it's not real fair of us to draw a trend line from where we were at from science to this new test that's brand new. You know, in the, in future years, we'll be able to kind of look at how that trend goes as we learn more about what's on the test and um, and how to, how to teach science better. But, um, at this point, that's where that is. And you'll see that dot on every graph you see for science. But that's a great question, Bruce. Thank you.
And with that, um, it's our science assessment are the MCA fours, which were previously MCA threes. Um, which we will also see a shift in reading standards, um, with our new reading MCA assessments this spring. So we will likely have another dot for reading as a reset, just like we did with science.
Um, again, here is the, the secondary. So we have secondary math on the left. Uh, secondary reading on the middle and secondary science on the right. Uh, again, uh, the, the dark blue line is the state average, the green line is the district, uh, and the light blue line represents the secondary trends course. So that is our, those are our MCA, um, assessments for, uh, last spring.
Looking at the FastBridge piece then, um, like I mentioned, they were a more local assessment.
I'd like to ask some questions on that. I thought there was one more. So when I look at the secondary school compared to elementary school, there's a little bit of difference between the state average and our line. So does that mean we have a whole bunch of kids not taking the tests in high school? Because if I remember right from last year, that is as far as the state's concerned, is a zero. And when you put the zeros in there, it throws us off because I just, a quick note about the FastBridge. It's not, doesn't show up in FastBridge, but it shows up here. Which means that something is out of ordinary.
We, we have just as a rough, rough data point, and I can get you the actual data. We essentially have about ten times more tests that are, um, opted out of at the secondary level than are opted out at the elementary level. So for every one test that's opted out of the elementary level, about ten tests are opted out at the secondary level.
But so we go back to bringing people to the community, right? So are they gonna want to look at our FastBridge or are they gonna want to look at the MCA's? So most people are gonna look at an MCA. So do you ever talk about how to change that?
Yeah, we, we spend a lot of time looking at that. Um, and you know, like, as you'll see from our FastBridge stories, we have, we have two very different stories at the secondary. Our Fr- our FastBridge data is exceptional. Like, we have, we have seventy. Yeah, we have seventy-one percent of our, our eighth graders in taking a math that's proficient at math, which is really correlative to the MCA math score. So seventy-one percent of our kids are able to prove proficiency in math on the FastBridge scores. Uh, but we will look at the MCA source that's significantly lower. So I think that's, that's a really good question for us to wrestle with. It's like, what is the difference between MCA assessment scores and FastBridge scores? And how do we, how do we align our MCA scores more in line with what we're seeing in FastBridge?
And what's the perception of the people that would bring your person to this community? So I can look at this. And so I got an eighth grader saying, um, geez, that would be nice. It'd make me younger, wouldn't it? I kind of would glance at this and I would probably take notice of it, then roll down to FastBridge. Now, I'm not sure the FastBridge information's quite there, but, um, it doesn't look right. And that's why I was really curious, because it's hard to overcome a zero. So you might have a, an excellent student and they decide not to take it. That is a huge loss, but as far as MCA is concerned, it's a reflection that I'd like to see go away in this school. Because it doesn't look right.
And not only that, but when we have a student that would normally pass the proficiency test, not opt out of it, it it almost hurts us double. Because not only are we not getting the boost from them being proficient, but we're getting penalized as a zero for a student that normally would be proficient. And so, you know, those are a lot of questions that we wrestle with of of how do we, how do we, you know, align these two scores and how do we make sure to tell our story? Because I think our FastBridge story looks really good. And and our FastBridge story tells a really good story of where we're at. But the MCA scores, we'd like to be more in line with that FastBridge story.
When you talk to other secondary principals, I suspect we're not the only ones.
Absolutely not.
And so nobody's got any revolutionary idea how to get these kids to take that.
I, I think part of this is, is encouraging conversation with our legislators about the reality of the data. Is this, is this a true reflection of our school districts? The other piece is, um, we do know that the Minnesota Department of Education is, um, going to be, I I anticipate starting to use FastBridge data differently and perhaps that can become part of our story. So, um, the most local things that we've done action-wise is to make sure that we're sharing that FastBridge data in addition to the MCA data on our homepage. So that click here, learn about us. It it tells yes and, but we, we do wonder.
So you're thinking of the Department of Ed, uh, Education is going to have a little more, um, reliability of FastBridge.
Yeah, sure. That'd be great. That's good. So with, um, the recent RED Act, um, they districts are required to use one of their approved screeners. And so that's FastBridge for us. And now MDE pulls our FastBridge data into their system. So now it is state data. And so anticipating that will be rolled out. And so when we complete our local literacy plan, um, which is a public document. which is a public document, now all of our fast bridge data is out there. And so you can go on M D E website and look up other districts' fast bridge webs, fast bridge day, data on the M D E website. So it is evolving at the M D E level. And so I will be curious to see the the fast bridge story, right, be told similar to M C A. And that, and that's new as of last, last spring is when M D E started pulling that data.
So pretty recent.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, that makes some sense because when I look at this, if fast bridge was something people relied on, I'm not sure we could keep the kids out of this school. The performance I see here is outstanding everywhere. But to get to the M C A, which people know, I remember one of our district wide meetings. That that came up at the district wide meeting because that's what everybody there, we had a lot of people from a lot of areas. That's what they were looking at. Well, we'll hope they're faster down there than the usual movement of the Department of Ed.
So next, looking at fast bridge data. This first slide looks at our early reading assessment, which is for kindergarten students and our first grade students. And those are, they consider them subtests, so like letter names, letter sounds, sight words and onset sounds. And so they'll take some tests to create a composite score. And so this data represents their composite. And in kindergarten and first grade, those subtests change from fall, winter to spring based on the progression of skills during the school year. But so just kind of overall, I just want to point out, the left is our district, so that district data is the two combined. That star represents that's our fall data this year. Okay, the the bars to the left of the star are data from the springtime. So we got spring of twenty one, spring of twenty two, spring of twenty three, spring of twenty four, and then this fall. Does that make sense? So where we've been in each spring, where we're currently at. Okay, and when we look at the colors on the graph, fast bridge uses the terminology of high risk, some risk, low risk and exceeds. And that means meeting benchmark and meeting that proficiency level. And so we're looking at the purple up above as meeting those benchmarks. So that's our early reading for our youngest learners. And then we look at fluency. How many words correct in a minute can students read? And this is oftentimes, you've heard us say before, a data point that will be a big indicator on comprehension, right? We need to have fluent readers in order to understand what we're reading. And so second grade, third, fourth and fifth grade, you can see fluency again where we're at this fall and where we've been previous springs.
That's impressive all by itself to me because they've been out all summer. It seemed to me that when we first started this, we had more of a drop in the fall.
Yeah, actually.
Looked like they were studying half the summer. It's impressive, I think.
Now, is that follows to, oh, that follows every class, like the fifth grade is at the spring spores of the current sixth graders? For fifth grade data or is it the spring of the accurate grade class?
Yep, so if we look at grade three, I'm just going to go to the farthest left, that fifty eight percent spring twenty one, that same cohort then is spring of twenty two as a fourth grader.
Okay, yep.
So you gotta jump.
So you move ahead. So essentially that spring of twenty four would be this year's sixth grade class as they completed fifth grade.
Over here.
Yeah.
Our fifth grade, yep.
And that's how I was trending with it, but I didn't want to assume that.
And that's, and that's, you know, like.
Fifth grade fluency, not the grades fluency as it moves along.
Right, and it's easy to see these graphs as, you know, following the same groups of students, but they don't, right? These is each line represents a different grade of students.
But it's based on fifth grade fluency or fourth grade fluency.
Grade levels, yes.
Perfect, that's what I was thinking.
So what's good with this is, you know, as far as the curriculum you're teaching for that particular grade. So so for for fifth grade, every year that that particular that 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 the, what you're teaching them is, the curriculum that you're teaching is sustaining from year to year.
Yeah, that's one way, one way to look at it is what we're doing in fourth grade working.
Exactly, right.
Regardless of where they're coming in at, right? Are we being grilled over that time? The other way to look at it is following that cohort of students, right, as they progress.
So so then then you see the building of of that as far as a particular grade Sammy through whomever versus just a a grade level. Yeah, I like that.
The next then was sixth, seventh and eighth grade, again, looking at fluency. And then the last one is our district percentage for this fall and then previous spring. So that's looking at accuracy, words correct in a minute. Then we look at A reading. An A reading is an adaptive reading assessment, which is going to adapt as the student goes through the assessment. So if they continue to get questions correct, their and or their questions will change to higher level. If they answer incorrectly, then it's going to back up to various skills. So it's adaptive and this looks more at the comprehension piece. So you can see again, that same star representing fall and then each spring where we are at. And our second graders are the first ones to take this A reading assessment. It is not in kindergarten or first grade. So we shift from learning how to read to learning to understand what we're reading. And then same for sixth, seventh and eighth grade. And then again, as district and we were pretty excited when we looked at that district data and we talk about moving that needle, right? And you kind of see it just up into the right, moving in that direction.
What what years has started out again, this second spring, you know, as far as calendar year?
So we started fast bridge pre, is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Covid.
Okay, yeah.
And for this particular report, we can only have five data points.
Yeah.
Which is kind of nice because then that's post covid, so then we can look forward, right?
Okay, to to answer my question, because I like that because now certain, so now I'm figuring out where those kids were at with covid. And I kind of, I remember vaguely seeing some of that data that they were down. But it looks like now you're you're pushing into kids that are in that seventh, eighth grade period and where they're at now versus where they were six, four or five years ago. It absolutely looks great. So something is working very well.
We're moving the needle.
Yep.
Still keep moving. Um, our ninth and tenth graders also have taken the A reading. So you can see their data here. We haven't always taken the A reading in ninth and tenth grade, so that's some fairly new data points. Uh, shifting over to early or to math on fast bridge.
So this is the early math assessment. So this would look at things like number identification, place value, number decomposition, number sequence stuff. So you can see again, the the graphs are aligned the same way where we're looking at spring data for the first few lines and then that last data is the new fall data point that we've taken. And so on the left you have district, and then we have kindergarten and first grade that we assess and for the early math assessment. And then the major assessment we use up there through second through tenth grade would be a math assessment. And so these are the A math scores for the elementary school, second through fifth grade. So I'll give you a second to just take a look at those. And again, these are the A math scores on the left is sixth grade and then it moves to seventh grade. And then our eighth grade A math scores and then our district A math scores overall. And A math is a lot like that adaptive math, this would be pretty correlative of the M C A test where they're answering grade level math skills questions.
Uh, there, anything else about data before we move on to questions three and four?
Yeah, I have one more. So if we compared the M C A data and you didn't have the state average in there, it would look a little different. Okay. Well, we're not the only ones in the state of Minnesota doing fast bridge. This fast bridge gives us a summary of those that are in fast bridge of what's going on at a state level. So we have a comparator.
So, sorry, go ahead.
And you can piggyback off or add more. So fast bridge is a nationally normed assessment. And so when we look at benchmarks, where the the graphs we showed you tonight are for Painesville, we can look at a normed uh, normed results in comparison to how are other students around the United States performing? But it doesn't give us friendly graphs.
Um, let's say that anybody that's doing computer stuff can query it. So we just Minnesota. So if there's a whole bunch of people in Minnesota.
Right.
Where would we be at? Because that's truly the missing comparison here is what the the people that are using fast bridge in the state of Minnesota, where they're kind of at. And then you have a true comparison to the M C A. But they can't query that.
They haven't yet. And what's interesting is fast bridge isn't the only screener assessment tool that is on M D E's list.
That's okay, we would just want what's there.
And we would, then we would have other fast bridge users.
Out of all the schools we have there on fast bridge.
Right.
It'd be interesting to see where they're at. And because they have no names, you're not giving away any private data. You're just averaging out those that are in the system. Be real curious to see what that implies.
And I would venture to guess, there are people at M D E who are also interested in that information, right? And as they're rolling out with the Read Act and collecting this level of data now, I would venture to guess there's people that will pull some reports together.
Just surprises me actually. For a computer based data company that you can't query the state of Minnesota or the rest of it? It's almost impossible that they can't do that.
And maybe we just haven't, you know, a lot of the conversation is around the nationally norm, like how do, how does this compare nationally? Because that's how it's normed, it's not normed in the state of Minnesota. It's across the nation. So that's, I I presume that's part of why it isn't broken down that way. But and and the Minnesota comprehensive assessment is about Minnesota specifically. So, yeah.
Yeah, and see, they're telling us what the average in the state is. Gosh, if there's two hundred schools on this, two hundred and fifty, hundred, at least it'd be interesting to see where we're at. Because my guess is that we're going to rank quite high straight across the board. That's my guess. I think what I see is we are spending a lot of time with these students to make sure they're on track or if they're off track, we're getting them on track again. And we're doing it on a regular basis, which means it's bragging rights, right? And it's something that somebody like myself or again, people coming to the district meeting that we have where we have everybody together, we have people from all over, a a comparator that they would have.
And and Bruce, that is so true. Especially when you take a look at our small numbers, as far as our student body being so small, it doesn't take much to tip the scales where we're not going to look good. You know, or or hurts hurt that we can't build back up. And so it's very important, I I I, you you said perfectly that that we have teachers here, we have staff here that is paying very particular, you know, close attention to what's going on in order to keep our students at a very high level. Because just a little, a a small skew in the data or a small percentage of 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 students failing in some area is going to look like, you know, a huge impact to the data that's out there, so. Yes, you're doing a great job.
That's a good segue into this slide, question three and four, so we gathered the data, but now what? So how do we respond when students don't get it? And and to your point here, we do spend and we allocate time and people, right, to help students when they are not responding. But we also allocate resources for when they do respond. And so how do we extend their knowledge and enrich their learning as well? And so with that, we, part of the Read Act was to bring on a literacy specialist. And so Mrs. Rasmussen is in this role new this year to help guide that work and meet those requirements from the Read Act and the system K twelve and making sure that we are meeting those requirements. Also working with grants and aligning all of our resources and and programs that we have. So that way we are using them to the best that we can and spelling them out. One of her bigger roles is facilitating the M T S S team and making sure that we have evidence based and research based interventions during our half hour and lead time, reviewing data and responding to when students are responding positively to an intervention, then we're moving them on to the next step, right? If they're not responding to the intervention, how do we modify and tweak that to meet their needs? So that's been a big part in helping us respond to our data. And then lastly, just, we wanted to call out our M T S S team of of people. So you can see who they are on the right, you know, working with social emotional and behavior throughout the district, math and reading as well. And then pulling together kind of our M T S S logo as a district and which mirrors M D E's multi tiered system of support framework, which we take all of the outside of the circle, making database decision, engaging our family and community in the work that we're doing, providing the infrastructure to do this work and to do it effectively, having assessments like fast bridge sensible to our students and then providing supports in behavior and academics. Bringing that all in to serve our bulldogs. Questions at our last slide, which slide to call out M T S S, but other wonderings or questions or things related?
Oh, just a comment, you're doing a wonderful job both of you. And as you have staff that you have on these one teaching. Thanks.
I know the data isn't the student specific, but I love data. And I like this because it, at least I feel and I can talk to anybody and say, now listen, this is really where we stand. So you can say whatever you want, but on average, this is what the system telling us. And what we are providing for the students here will go up against anybody.
Oh, absolutely, especially when you're in that seventy percent of our students, high school students are taking college based class or college level classes, that is, that is outstanding.
I said, I don't know if this is even on, but is any of the other areas schools using fast bridge? I'd be curious to compare directly to schools we're essentially competing against.
Yeah, yeah, and we, we were able to go on the M D E website and look at local literacy plans because we had the question, oh, I wonder how many in a neighboring district are meeting proficiency levels with their fluency? And so we were able to poke around a little bit and just kind of see where, we didn't do a super deep dive, but we scratched the surface.
But that'll be a tool we can use to compare their schools in the future, so.
It's impressive that we have leadership and we have, it's also impressive from talking to the teachers and the parents and the other workers and. And it's also impressive from talking to the teachers and, uh, the parents and the other workers in the school and how hard they all worked to be a team for all of our students. It's just impressive.
Yeah, we have a great staff.
We have a great staff. Yours also.
Other questions? Otherwise, uh, thank you. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
To pull this together, yeah, very informative and again, and.
Sure, period time.
Yeah. Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. Hang on, to the transfer information roundtable?
Yeah, we had the, uh, district wide, uh, uh, excuse me, we had the, uh, the developing committee that was back on the eighth, and did a great job. Uh, again, talking about the staff here and just the way that they, they are just very particular on how they lay things out. Talk about, uh, what is best for the district, what's best for themselves. And then how to lay that out to ensure that students, of course, this is for, for staff. Uh, not necessarily for the students, but they're always looking at the students, uh, and the importance of that. So just a, I, I can't say enough one step. And then we do have the, the district-wide advisory committee that's coming up on the twentieth, so next Monday.
And then we'll start out on the twenty-eighth, so we'll get an update with that.
So two things. Um, one is, I really like when the kids come some, and I know I mentioned it before, because you've got the innovation center going on. We have stuff going on here that nobody knows about. And I, I enjoy it when it comes here. Because the one thing I know for sure is that camera is on and anybody can sit and watch what's going on almost no matter where you are. The second thing that came up tonight was we had an offer from a company for everybody to go on to Lewis Industries. So how many have been in there recently?
Uh, a couple of years ago.
Yeah, I've been in there probably for five or six years.
Yep.
I don't know how we would do that as a school board. We would probably have to have a meeting there.
Yeah, I mean, you, what I've heard is a personalization. You can reach out and they'll walk you through. I, I met, um, I met with Lance and he walked me through the whole organization and the whole company and, and had a great opportunity to, to sit down and learn about what they're doing. And, um, when it works for you, give them a call and, uh, and, and.
Well, like, I would be more efficient with their time.
Yeah.
Than if we all could show up at once, a similar time and then get a grand tour, might be kind of cool. Just look for that. I mean, I think part of this is thinking of stuff that would help us all. And I think it reminds me of a time that we were trying to get some of the, um, let's call them the vocational trades going in the school. And at that time, there were these days off, not days off, days of not, um, in the classroom. Around, and there was a trip that was conducted, taking everybody to a trade school in St. Cloud. The whole picture of what we were doing in the trades changed. And I think those kind of things are important, a little out of the box, but anyway.
Yeah, and, um, October is actually, um, I, I believe all of October is manufacturing month. Is that right? Um, so there's often, uh, there's, there's tours of all of our organizations in October. Um, when I get those dates, I, I will forward those on to board members. And as a community member, you are welcome to attend. Um, we've been to Avon Plastics, we've been to Nelson Plastics, we've been to Lewis Industries, we've been to, um, Valley Industries. So it's a really nice opportunity to learn about what's happening in our industrial park. Um, and see how, uh, how we have partnerships and, and, and how we do connect. And so, um, uh, when I get those dates, I'll pass those along.
Yeah.
Good.
Nelson, major industrial park.
There we go.
So we have full stuff over there.
Hearing nothing else, we are.